I really want to thank everybody up here because that was an interesting discussion. And I think this is going to take a lot of work and so we're going to have to carry forward with another meeting and potentially another meeting after that and then work through it. So, I think with that, I want to close that discussion for tonight. And again, I appreciate everybody's comments. And open it up to the public for comment. And again, like Garrett said, like Greg said, we're going to have more opportunities for public comment. So I'd like to just list off the first three people. Have you come down to the microphone? You can share your name. I'll kind of prime people as we go. I'd like people to try and keep their comments relatively short if possible, two to three minutes at this time. You'll have an opportunity to provide a written comment to us again on numerous occasions and oral comment. Oh, there's a few more. And that way, everybody who signed up gets a chance to speak because it's important that everybody's voice gets to be heard even if it's just for a few minutes. And I'll give you a heads up when you run out of time. So with that, Shannon Maris, James Peterson, and Teresa Williams are the first three speakers in that order. Please don't forget to share your name and address.
My name is Shannon Maris. Address is 1814 Donovan Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And after listening to -- well, I'll give you some background. I'm a residential designer, so I'm on the front lines of the requests. And for the last 15 years, this has been one of the most popular things that have been asked for with my clients. And I've been having to tell them, "No, I'm sorry, you can't do that." And there are some very real issues. I have not talked to any developers. I have not talked to any -- excuse me, any students. These are all family members who are looking for housing for other family members or they're waiting to retire and hoping to move to a smaller home, all of their reasons that were talked about in the matrix. But I have names and faces for all these people. So those are the people that are waiting and not getting any response. And the 2008 infill toolkit was a focused attempt to try and get the detached ADUs in place. And that pretty much defaulted to multifamily. So I would like to correct that we've been trying to get this through for almost 10 years. So that's a bit disappointing. And so I'm speaking as an advocate for all of my people and clients that are wanting these things and can't. And then after -- oh, I also want to clarify that it's important to me that it's owner-occupied. I think that's a huge thing to maintain. And then after listening to this, there -- I don't deny that there are issues in other neighborhoods. And I think there are trust issues, and I think that's a separate issue. I think there's enforcement issues, and I believe that's a separate issue. But if you're waiting until all of the "because of X," or "because of Y," or "because of this, we're not moving on," you're going to create exactly what you don't want, which is people finding a way to deal with housing, and they're going to do it in an illegal way. And it's going to continue because it hasn't stopped. Just because you haven't made the rules for it, people are still going to build them because the need is there. There's a need for housing. There's a need for family members. And now there's no rules even to provide for that. So the only option is illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real quick, Iris reminded me, thank you, that if you're up in the upper deck, you can use the microphone up there. You don't have to walk all the way down to the front here. I think there's just a button to turn it on. Is that right, Heather? So just make sure you press the mic button at the bottom of the speaker and the red light's on if you're up top and you want to speak. So James?
My name is James Peterson, 5 Sunnyside Lane. I'm the president of Homes Now, Not Later. We're a nonprofit that builds tiny homes for the homeless. We've already built two. We're in the process of building our third one. Our first two didn't have restrooms, but they were attached. They were in the backyard of a house that they had 24-hour access to. Why ADUs are so important to us is because we can house working homeless. We can house people that already have incomes, but they can't afford rent. So we're looking to bring it to Bellingham. We're having great success out in Lumney. We've already housed, let's see, with our two homes, we housed four people because we put two single people in that left room for -- in a shelter for a mom and her kids. Now we're building this next one that does have water, sewer, and electric. And it is -- it's up to code. It's on Lumney because we couldn't do it in Bellingham. We want to come to Bellingham and help solve homelessness. It's not about making money. It's about housing homeless. I'm tired of people saying, "I'm sick of the homeless downtown." But they don't want to do anything. We want to do something. We want to build. We're sitting on money right now that has been donated from private donations. We don't take taxpayers' money. But we can't build here. And it's pretty sad. We want to build, and we want to house homeless people. So I hope that this goes through because I think it will help us out. Our buildings aren't huge, 80% of 1,000 feet. Wow, I'm thinking, wow, that's a big house. Ours are eight by 10, and the one we're building now is 10 by 18. So 180 square feet. And it'll have a bathroom, a shower, electric, and a kitchen. So hopefully this goes through. We're not out here to run a bed and breakfast. We're out here to house homeless people, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Hey, excuse me, everyone. I'm sorry. I know that you are supportive of certain comments, but we can't have any audience commentary, positive or negative, just out of fairness to every speaker, okay? Thank you. So Teresa Williams, Rod Burton, and Doug Gustafson. Apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's name. So Teresa's up next. I'm assuming a few people have left. If Teresa's not here, we'll move to Rod. All right.
My name is Rod Burton. I live at 238 North Forest Street in Bellingham. I live in a neighborhood that is a mix of single-family and multifamily. I live on a block that's all single-family with across the street is the South Hill Apartments. And on the other side of the alley, it's all single-family, but there are quite a few accessory dwelling units there, some of which are not permitted probably, but I don't know. Nobody causes any problems, so it's not an issue for me. I have a legal ADU at my house, which I've had for about 10 years, I believe. And it's been great, you know? The income has been great. It's good to be able to provide a reasonable rental unit for somebody. My tenants stay for years and years because it's a good place. So I think I'm very supportive of ADUs citywide. I think allowing the detached ADUs citywide in owner-occupied, single-family situations is a great idea. I'd be very supportive of that. The permit and construction issues were not a problem for me at all. I mean, the city was very helpful. I don't remember having to pay a whole lot of money, but maybe that's because I did it so long ago. And maybe there's more fees now. And between the restore and, you know, other deals, I was -- and I did a lot of the work myself, so actually doing it was not very costly. I think you should apply these things citywide and not have it be a neighborhood-by-neighborhood issue or an issue where the neighborhood has to go through some kind of legislative process to get it into their neighborhood. But I think this should -- these rules should be applied citywide. In my situation with attached ADU, according to the Realtor, it adds zero value to my house because essentially I took two bedrooms and turned them into an apartment. So it's -- I turned a three-bedroom house into a one-bedroom house.
About 30 seconds, Rod.
Okay. Sorry. I have a question about the height limit suggestion. I wondered about how feasible carriage house-type detached ADUs would be if you could -- if you had a neighborhood with, you know, peaked roofs. Would you be able to actually put an ADU on top of a garage and have enough square footage and enough ceiling heights to do that if you were limited to 20-feet height total? And, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Hey, how's it going? I'm Doug. I'm Technical Director of Homes Now. Jim just spoke. Basically, our goal is to end homelessness in Wacom County. And through our travels of actually meeting different homeless people, we found that there's a lot of homeless people that they work full-time, but they work minimum wage. I mean, add it up. Let's say you make like $10 an hour, times 40 hours a week, you know, $400, times four weeks, that's, you know, $1,600. So, you know, some of these apartments are going for $1,000 or $1,200 a month. And so there's definitely a housing crisis in Bellingham. I mean, I've lived here for 10 years. I live in the Puget neighborhood, so right near Civic Field. And the prices for rentals are a lot higher than they were when I first moved here 10 years ago. I probably wouldn't be able to afford -- I still have the rental rates I did from 10 years ago now. So if I was just starting off moving here, I probably wouldn't be able to afford it. But what I'm saying is that there's a lot of people you walk by on the street that you wouldn't know are homeless because they clean up good and they sleep in their car or whatever. But when the rents get more and more expensive, it's just inevitable that you're going to have more people on the street. And so basically, I support detached dwelling units being more readily available and especially citywide. I think that the enforcement thing, I think that the reason why that might be a problem in some cases is because maybe the process is too complicated or it's too much of a hassle, and then it's also not strongly enforced. So people kind of just feel like they can get away with it. I would say, yeah, sure, you should enforce it, but you should make the rules themselves very simple and straightforward and easy to follow to deal with that concern so that you can have a win-win situation where A, it's easier to get started with it, but also B, it isn't -- it's straightforward and not annoying or too complicated to figure out for a regular person.
About 30 seconds, Doug.
Oh, okay, yeah. So in order to, you know, we've been able to build two homes for $3,500 per home. We could -- for an eight by 10, we could definitely build them bigger. But basically, I wouldn't mind if it was in my backyard. I wouldn't mind if it was in my neighbor's backyard. I see it as one solution of many. In single residential areas, these are -- this is like land or grass that wouldn't be used for anything, and you could actually use it for something useful and give somebody affordable rent, provide supplemental income for you if, say, you -- so I had more to say, but that was.
That's okay. If you're in the middle of a thought, please feel free to finish it. It's just a reminder. Just a reminder that your time's up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you. So I was just saying that I think it's important to give people more options. And you might get some of the concerns people are talking about in terms of short-term rentals and stuff like that. But you're also going to get a lot of other stuff that's not any of those problems. And you're basically just giving homeowners more options if you allow this. Whereas right now, they have fewer options. It's like, why have your own land if you can't do anything on it, you know? I don't know. That's my thought.
And also, folks who have a lot of thoughts on this, remember, if you get halfway through your spiel, come back to the next meeting and do the second half, okay? You know, or write it in. I mean, the written comments are great because we get to absorb them for a period of time before the meeting. So I really value written comment, not that I don't value oral comment.
No, no, thanks. And I did send a written comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So the next three speakers are Emma, and I'm going to mess this up, Big On Giari, and Jason Bourne and Wendy Scher. Jason Bourne. Jason Bourne has signed up. So Emma, and then Jason, and then Wendy.
Go ahead.
It looks like Emma might have not.
My name is Jason Bourne, and it was my name first. I have a bunch of good stuff to say. Basically, I came to -- oh, sorry. I live at 605 West Maryland Street.
Thank you.
And I came to advocate for detached ADUs. But after hearing the discussion here, I feel like we're in pretty good hands. I feel like you guys talked this thing up one side and down the other, and you're definitely not done. And I'm proud of seeing the breadth of discussion, so I don't feel like I need to say anything else. I'll continue to be involved, but thank you.
Thank you. So Wendy, and then Rosa. Rosa has a hyphenated last name Rice. And then Mark Sherman, and then Derek Long. And I know some of these people won't be here, so we'll just continue to move along. Wendy?
Cam Wendy Scher, 1905 Lyerby. And I've written two letters on Tuesday and sent them, so you've probably hopefully read them. But this is a little bit more information. So we worked diligently for the last two years, not one year, Chris, two years, as a committee. A lot of the people from our Happy Valley Neighborhood Board and Housing Committee worked tirelessly to look at all the different models around the country and around the Northwest. And we realized Vancouver, B.C., and Portland, and Seattle. And now, for one year, Ferndale has their detached ADU agreement. And they got it done in one year, by the way. Anyway, but we worked diligently to develop some insights about our housing crisis in our neighborhood. So if you look at next door, some of our neighborhoods, people are always trying to get into our neighborhood, and we can't -- there's no housing. There's just no housing left. And I've been through three different comprehensive plan updates since I was a planning student here in '73 in our neighborhood. And we just have to add more diverse options to our neighborhood. We looked really carefully at our neighborhood, and the planning commissioners have this. We looked at the current zoning, and at the current zoning, we had, you know, a huge chunk of single-family, which is in yellow. But in reality, Chris, where's the other one? But in reality, it's not all single-family. Back in the '70s, when I was a permanent -- I worked in the Permit Clerk Center here. It was Wacom County City together here. And then in the '80s, we allowed conditional uses for apartments and duplexes in the single-family zone. So this is from a tax assessor's point of view. If you look at your own neighborhood from the tax assessor's point of view, and Chris Beehe at the City Hall can give you this map, you realize that it is an eclectic neighborhood. It's not a historic neighborhood, but it's -- it does -- the single-family zone is already full of apartments and duplexes. So it's not like you're adding something to a sacred, single-family zone neighborhood. So we figured out, looking at all the infill toolkits, which never got applied to the single-family area, that we would try to pick the low-hanging fruit. So that's why we went with our pilot program. So since we're having so much demand with families that have lived here for many years and their parents are aging out, I'm a grandma now, you know, we need ADUs and detached ADUs and smaller lot size and the urban infill toolkit in the single-family zone. So I just wanted to say, you know, get your running shoes on because we want this to happen citywide, but mostly in our neighborhood faster. And if we can accelerate whatever process, you know, we have people waiting for permits right now. Shannon has designs for permits for detached ADUs that we're ready to put in, and we're just waiting for it. So, you know, we've got the money.
About 10 seconds. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so Rosa, but it looks like maybe Rosa's not here. And then Mark Sherman, Derek Long, and Dan Ramsen.
Yeah, hi. My name is Mark Sherman. I'm 1470 Grant Street. I'm in the York neighborhood. And I just wanted to point out, as has been pointed out a little earlier, that this map is actually fictional. And it has two ADUs in the York neighborhood. I talked to -- at the dedication of the Harriet Spinell Park, I talked to some folks from Samish. They did an informal run-through of their neighborhood, an inventory, I think, I believe it's something like 27 ADUs. Now, so if you're going to use -- this is not a map to use as a planning tool because it doesn't reflect the reality. Now, Rick Sepler told us in the ADU Focus meeting that it is very difficult to do an accurate inventory because of the legalities involved. But in order to plan for growth, we have to know what is actually extant, what exists in Bellingham neighborhoods right now. And for neighborhoods to be participating in the planning and of what happens in their neighborhoods, we need to figure out some way to make a map that actually reflects reality. If we're going to plan for growth, we need to know what's actually there. And pointing out that, well, we can't legally go through, you know, and determine through the courts what's happening doesn't mean that we're off the hook for figuring out what is actually happening. So I just want to encourage, before you actually make citywide changes, you know, you need to know what the composition of ADUs in every neighborhood is to some extent to have some kind of accuracy happening. And I just want to encourage that.
Thank you, Mark. So we had Derek Long, and then Dan, and then Hill Cummings. Any of those folks? Ready to speak? Colin Middleton? Is there a Colin Middleton here? I see some people coming down. Doesn't look like it, though. Ken Mann, Jonah Stinson, and Dean Fearing. Oh, sorry. Dean? I don't see Ken. Is there a Colin Middleton?
Hi, Steve. Hi, I'm Dean Fearing, 1303 Commercial Street. I'm the Executive Director of Colson Community Land Trust. We provide affordable homeownership opportunities for hard-working families here in Wacom County. It's been mentioned several times tonight that we do have a housing crisis going on right now. I think that's very apparent with what housing prices are doing. And so I think the infill or the ADU ordinance would be a great way to allow some infill opportunities that have been discussed tonight. I like the idea of having some incentives for people to do affordable ADUs in their backyards, maybe reducing the fees for those ADUs would be a great idea if they were for, you know, people with good jobs at 100% or below of area median income would be a great incentive. Possibly some other ideas to help create some affordable housing. It's a great way for our buyers to stay in their homes if they can build an accessory dwelling unit. It's a great way for our buyers to age in place. I know that's a big concern for a lot of our homeowners. They want to stay in their house, and then of course, you know, places for their children to stay in the community, too. So I'd love to see this citywide, as you discussed. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, so Rose Lathrop, Kristen Johnson, and Mona Leichner are the next three on the list. Like Rose is -- you gonna stay up there? All right.
I'm doing it. Oh, it's on. Okay. Hi, I'm Rose Lathrop. I'm at 2713 McKenzie Avenue, Happy Valley. And I just wanted to say, I am also Sustainable Connections Green Building and Smart Growth Program Manager. And so I have both sort of a professional and a personal need for ADUs in our community. I am -- personally, I live on a 10,000-square-foot lot in Happy Valley. I am going to be an empty nester tier here in the next year and would love the opportunity to have an ADU in my backyard. I would be able to live in that and then also be able to rent out my house at an affordable rate and pay for my daughter to go to college. So there's the social, environmental, and the economic benefits to ADUs. It's not going to solve our housing crisis, but it's certainly a really important tool. And I really love that you guys are talking about doing this citywide. One of the things as a former developer is having things that are simple and easy to understand. So I worked with single-family homeowners building homes for years, and the complications of the tedious rules and regulations make it very challenging. So anything you can do to simplify and make it easier, whether that's the number of people that are allowed in the units, heights, just simplifying it as much as possible and making it streamlined so that everybody can understand and be able to know whether it's something that they can do on their lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Kristen, and then Mona, and then Chelsea Farmer. Any of those? Yeah.
I'm Mona Leichner, 2821 Ellis Street. I completely agree with Garrett and Iris. I think it's -- it still isn't clear to me, actually, from the city when I read the materials, if the detached units were only specific to the pilot project in Happy Valley or if they were suggesting that citywide with Happy Valley being somewhat different. I think it's ludicrous not to, again, as many have stated, have this citywide detached, attached. I think by how it has been as attached, many of the neighborhoods that we're talking about are historical neighborhoods that have garages in the back of the properties. And to try to have an attachment to the house to make it a legal ADU is -- it doesn't fit the neighborhood. It doesn't look good to add on some sort of enclosed accessory to the main house just to make it legal. And I also agree, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, the last woman, is having things more user-friendly so that people can actually -- for the city to say, "We're going to make this happen," but then throw up so many roadblocks is creating our illegal problem also. The more roadblocks that are thrown up, the more illegals get built, I do believe. And I think besides looking at the design and the actual property and, you know, working with the city on that, I think we do need to look at other jurisdictions. And I've been to meetings in the past before. And if you look to Portland, and I was just looking up, and I -- many of you have maybe read through, they did do a survey on their ADUs back in 2013, 14, something like that. And they are known to be, in the nation, the most progressive as far as ADU development, even as they go as so far as waiving some of the permitting fees, if you can imagine that. And they still say that nonetheless, presently only 1% of eligible residential properties have been developed into ADUs. So I think this concern, it's a valid concern, but I don't know that it's based on fact, the concern that suddenly our single-family neighborhoods are going to become these multi-dwelling neighborhoods. I don't know that that's a valid concern based, if you look at other jurisdictions that are so much more liberal than we are.
About 20 seconds. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. About 20 seconds.
Okay, thanks. And also with the parking, I do like, I know that in the past it has been one stall that is -- I like if they're adding language to look at that on a case-by-case basis. If there's ample street parking, and that can be shown and proven, then accept that and waive that parking. Let's make it a more friendly way to get this ball rolling. And let's not do it neighborhood by neighborhood. It's taken 20 years to get 107 built, five a year. And if we have to come back neighborhood by neighborhood, we're probably all going to be gone at that point. Somebody else is going to be talking about. I mean, seriously, if you think about it, so.
Thank you, Mona.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had Chelsea, and then Matt Petral, and Alex McLean are the last three people on the list. Obviously, anybody else who wants to speak can speak. You just wait until after Alex has spoken if he ends up speaking. So Chelsea?
Hi. My name's Chelsea Farmer. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I have a 20,000-square-foot lot. And I agree with what the last woman said, is I really don't think that a lot of people are just going to suddenly be building. I can't, I won't be, but I'd like to be able to. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is, if it's something that you're opposed to, something that I want to point out is, your neighborhood isn't the only thing that keeps you in Bellingham. It's a lot of other things that apply to that. And one of those things are the -- so I come from a restaurant background. I've -- I worked at Deanna's, and I loved working there because I worked with a subculture of people who work in restaurants. They're often doing other things. They're artists and musicians and actors and supplement their incomes by working in restaurants. And I owned a restaurant for 12 years. And there are people that are making really good money and can't afford rent, but there are no places for them to live. And I had an employee that started a couple years ago where she -- her -- she got out of her relationship and she needed to move out of her house, and there was no place for her to live except out on Chuckanut. And she biked from Chuckanut to Wacom Community College, back downtown to work because she works nights. There's no -- there are no buses that go out there. And it wasn't that she didn't have the money for a place to live or she couldn't pay rent. There was just no inventory. So I really support this. I think, yeah, there are problems, but they're just easily addressed. So I'm -- not easily, but you're doing a good job. So thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. So I had Matt, it looks like Petral, and then Alex McLean. If either of those folks would like to speak, it looks like we have somebody coming down. Is this Matt or Alex?
Alex.
Alex, all right.
Yeah, Alex, I live in Happy Valley on 32nd Street. I'm also a member of the Happy Valley Neighborhood Association. As Wendy said, you know, Happy Valley has worked on this for quite a while. And I think it's awesome that you're considering going citywide, but I do wonder if you could quarantine Happy Valley because we've got some quarantine Happy Valley because we've got some specifics that we're interested in. I'm also frankly just a little nervous. Once you blow it open citywide, you're going to have certain neighborhoods that are going to come in and try and torpedo it because, you know, some neighborhoods are going to freak out. Other neighborhoods are going to be super awesome with it. So, we're talking about the pilot program for Happy Valley. Maybe you could compartmentalize that proposal as compared to jumping into the citywide aspect. Just floating that out there. My interest, besides being on the, the board and active in green building and just a building goon in general, I like building stuff, I've got a half-acre lot smashed up against the freeway there on 32nd Street. In the last year, we've had five houses built on 32nd Street, and we've also got 30 units of apartments coming in. And as somebody else said, you know, I don't have control over that, but I've got this half-acre lot with a house, you know, kind of stupidly put right in the middle of it in 1968. You know, they were smoking something. So, I cannot divide the lot. And I've also got two separate parking garages, or garages. I don't know why they built two. I want to make one into a super pimp, green, detached ADU. As many people have already commented, there's a lot of interest in the building community, especially the green building community. And I think this would be a, you know, really good opportunity to create kind of green laboratories for these small houses, these ADUs. Because your, your investment is not as severe as a brand-new house. You could do a green roof. You could do solar panels. You could do, you know, you could ask people to do low-impact development on these things, and it's not going to be catastrophic in, in that respect. It might be a good thing to nudge people and reduce the number who might flood in and try and, you know, do, yeah.
Alex, about 20 seconds, Alex.
So, also the other thing is owner occupied. Owner occupied. Woo-hoo!
About 20.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, so that's the last person on the list. And if there's anybody else who'd like to comment, just let's, let's come on, either stay up top if you want to speak up top or come on down and line up against the side here. And it looks like you, you were up there first, and then we'll move to Linda. And, and it looks like we've got some more, so maybe we'll go back and forth with people. And please remember to state your name and, and address for the record.
Hi, thank you for the work you do. My name is Maggie Bates. I live at 1115 22nd Avenue, which is in Happy Valley, but that didn't bring me here. What brought me here is I'm a residential designer. I work for A1 Builders and Adaptations Design Studio at Worker-owned Cooperative. We see people often who have developed illegals and we have to deal with the rules and regulations. And I guess I'm up here to recommend that when you're thinking about enforcement, to make it easy for people who are illegal. So, they'll, because people who develop illegal dwellings don't do it through a reputable builder. And if they don't do it through a reputable builder, they're not going to go by the, the residential code, which covers egress, fire separation, all those kinds of things. So, I think that you should address both the illegals and the illegals at the same time so that people's residences across the board, across the city, are all safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's jump down and then back up. So, Linda?
Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. We have no policy on ADUs, but we have strongly supported the idea that there is no silver bullet for the housing problems we have and that we need variety in size and options. I think you guys are heading in a great direction. I really appreciate many of the comments tonight. The idea of incentivizing through possibly reduced fees might make sense because building fees, as some of you know, to create a separate residence regardless of size right now can be $20,000 or more. And if you're building a small ADU, that can be self-defeating right there. So, that's certainly a thought. We are talking about citywide approach. I think that's great. What you might want to do is consider allowing neighborhoods to come in if they want something that's even more diverse, as in Sutton Valley's suggestion for, you know, different numbers or whatever. I mean, perhaps you'd want to be sitting a setting, excuse me, setting a citywide minimum or something and then allowing neighborhoods to come in to approach you for basically pilot projects, but, but doing it slightly even, even more so. The one comment I have about enforcement is that enforcement is kind of a separate issue. I think that's correct. We have, for instance, illegal duplexes in apartments, but we don't stop allowing people to build apartments and duplexes, you know? So, there, there is a division problem there. But I also think if there's any way of incentivizing people and simplifying matters so that folks will come in and do it correctly or, or correct an illegal situation, that that would be a wonderful addition to what we're doing here. Thank you much.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, this is Ann, I guess?
Yes.
Is it? Okay. So, I'm Diane Foster, 926 Mason Street. And so, I have sort of an unusual angle on the whole thing. I'm in Seehome neighborhood, and I believe that in general, we were sort of against the toolbox, the infill toolbox kit back in 2008, although there's lots of differences of opinions. But, and it was mainly because of the design standards. I mean, personally, I didn't like, you know, the toolbox. But, I'm looking at, I just spent, you know, nine months in Seattle having a bone marrow transplant. So, I'm seeing those huge changes there. And I grew up in Seattle, and I like historic homes. I like old craftsmen. They're terrible for storage. I mean, you know, they had, they're cut up wrong, so they're not very good, they're not very livable. But I just like them. And I look at my neighborhood in Mason Street and I see all these old craftsmen that are mostly rentals. And I could see rich people from Seattle moving here, which they are. And they, you know, offer maybe $800,000 to buy one of those and tear it down and put up these huge McMansions. You would not believe what's happening in Seattle. You know, they fill the whole space, so there's no green, there's no bushes, no trees, which we need for our mental health as well as carbon sequestration. And they fill it with these big, flat-roofed houses, 20,000 square feet, and two people live in it. I mean, I don't want to live in McMansionville, frankly. And so, I think detached ADUs are a good idea because if it means that the people that own those little craftsmen can afford to not have to sell out, I mean, there's nothing saying that they wouldn't anyway. But it might help mitigate that situation as, as these people move here. And they're moving to my old hometown of Bremerton as well. They're going to, you know, bulldoze that over and take out old houses and build McMansions. That's going to be happening soon as well. I don't know what else we can do to stop it, but it's just another angle to kind of look at it from. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll jump back down here.
I'm Jake Charlton. I live at 1609 Harris Avenue. I'm a software tester by day, so my brain always looks at things and tries to break them. So, when I listened to Chris's presentation, there were a couple of things that came to mind. Neighbor permissions at one point was brought up, and I couldn't help but wonder, what is a neighbor? Is it the person who owns the building next door? The person who lives in it? If it's a renter? What if the house is vacant or it's a vacation rental? Who do you need to get permission from? And the other, you haven't come, gotten to it yet, but height limitations. If you're on a steep slope, how do you measure height if, you know, it might be 20 feet high the whole way long, but it's on a 45% grade, so maybe it's a 40-foot difference? Just some clarification to be done there. And I think you're going out about the right way. You got a good discussion going. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Is there another speaker up top?
Yeah.
Yep, go right ahead.
Joe Jeffrey, 2219 B Street. I've lived in five different states across the continent, several states across the world, self-employed, self-made, working-class, shoestring budget. And it really frustrates me to hear, you know, housing prices associated with this conversation. I, I'm 33 years old. I can't even dream of owning a house. I don't know anyone in my generation who can dream of owning a house. We're all renters. I really appreciate that you brought up what a large rental community there is here. I think that there's actually a lot more that just aren't counted in the statistics because we've got no choice. We've got to live somewhere. We work here. This is a great place to be. This is a great place to, to live, to work, so on and so forth. And, you know, I, I don't really want to raise my daughter in an apartment complex. We deserve to be able to live in neighborhoods too, you know? We do. We deserve to be able to rent in neighborhoods. And I'm not a bad neighbor, nor is most anyone I know. We interact with our neighbors. We interact with our neighborhoods. We, we, we participate in, in the activities that happen in our neighborhoods, and we deserve that right. It shouldn't just be occupied by, by the owners. We deserve the right to live here too. And that's all I really want to say.
Thank you, Joe. Let's go down here and then we'll go back up because it looks like you're the last speaker down here.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Zach Giffen. I'm the host of a television show called Tiny House Nation. You may have heard of it. And I'm also a resident here in Bellingham. I live at 3221 on Locust Avenue. And I'm also the, heavily involved with an organization called Operation Tiny Home, where we go around the country and work with different communities, building actually communities of tiny homes for homeless veterans. And obviously, that's not what we're talking about. I came here a little late, but I just want to say that I've seen a whole lot more dysfunctional conversation than what I've seen tonight. But I, I will just add a little perspective coming from someone who talks a lot about this in different parts of the countries. There's a lot of different places that are a little head in terms of this conversation. We're talking about using Happy Valley as the test subject. Well, we have a lot of test subjects already out there in the country that we can look to and try to get some kind of statistics back on, on what these policies actually do. And what I will say is that they've tried to implement tiny homes in building codes and zoning a whole lot of different ways. You know, tiny home communities is one thought process. ADUs is another thought process. There's actually cities that have actually opened up tiny homes on wheels to be used as accessory dwelling units. And I would just encourage people, you know, within this conversation to look at what's out there and, and try to see what the, where the successes are. And I'll close by basically relaying what has been the findings of most places that try to go down this path of utilizing accessory dwelling units as solutions for affordable housing options, as well as different kind of community factors like what you're referring to. And the findings really are very much in congruency with what was talked about before, where very few of these properties are actually going through with it. So, we're having huge discussions all over the country that are, that are really heated about policies that aren't actually creating much.
About 20 seconds.
And, and so, I would just warn you that that's actually been the case. And so, now places are going back and reevaluating their policies. And the reason that, my belief, this is where it's my belief, the reason that it's not actually taking off and turning into affordable housing options or really solutions for lower-income families to move into more affluent areas, which really creates residential diversity, which is a key cornerstone in actually creating this wonderful society that we have, where people can actually move upward in mobility through the economic spectrum based on hard work. The real problem holding it back is that the homeowners that can afford to build an ADU lack the incentive, the financial incentive. And then the homeowners that are struggling, that would love to share their property and relieve some of the, the cost to their daily life, they can't afford that extra, to take out the extra financing to actually create that ADU. And that is the very reason that it's not taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Ernest. I live in the Newport Apartments on Adams Avenue off of 32nd. So, I guess I just happen to live in Happy Valley. I didn't, didn't think about that before I came here. It's funny that I follow up this chap who lives on B Street because I'm 26. I'm a letter carrier with the Postal Service. I think I have a really awesome, middle-class job. I'm a proud union member, delegate to the Central Labor Council. Yeah, did I hear, hear, hear? And I can't, for the life of me, find a house that I can even rent. I, I live in an apartment that is pretty crappy in my standards. I'm getting married this next June. I'm pretty excited about that. And my fiance, she's a grad student at Western, much more smarter, smarter than me. She, she doesn't want to live where I live, where we can afford because it's dark, she can't have a garden, you know, she loves being able to cultivate plants and all that. If there were affordable ADUs, when we get married next June, we could afford something like that. We could build our, our home together in a community like the Sunnyland neighborhood, like Happy Valley, like all these other wonderful neighborhoods we have around this great city. But because everything is so darn expensive, where's that rent is too damn high guy? We can't do that. And I had one other thought, though, about this maximum occupancy of people in these ADUs. If I marry my wi, my fiance, God bless, and we move into, if we do move into an ADU and we have one child, we're at max capacity. Well, if I'm in the Sunnyland neighborhood, I want to live there probably for the next 20-something years. I love the Sunnyland neighborhood. That's where my mail route is. And two kids might come along, three, four. I mean, I'm Catholic, so God, God only knows how many kids. So, you know, and, and I understand at a certain point, you can't live in an ADU with six kids. But two kids, you know, especially if they're same gender, you could pop them in the other room, stack them on top of each other just fine.
Yep. About 30 seconds.
But I, I just, that, that seems like a funny stipulation we're putting on people. And I don't quite understand the motivation for that. And I, I hope that through the conversations that there can be room for, for altering that. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for adding some levity. Looks like we have another speaker?
Yep. Okay. My name's Alan Crum, and I live out on Sunset at Racine. And a adult-living complex, which I hate. I'm 65 and I'm more spry than anybody else in the damn building and take care of most of them. I would love to be in an ADU, taking care of an older couple that lives in the house or lives in the ADU and I live in the house. There, there are, there's a definite need for these things. And I think they need to be considered a citywide thing, not neighborhood by neighborhood, or where the neighborhood has to then come to you and say, "Oh, we want to do it now. Give us approval to do it." It needs to be citywide. If you do have any kind of neighborhood-kid connection, it becomes not my neighborhood. And the comment about the tiny homes, one of the, one of the ladies here said she's got this great piece of property, but she can't afford to do an ADU. Well, you can consider, if you do consider a tiny home as an ADU, portable though, there are people like me that would be willing to do the cost of that ADU and put it on her property. I think there needs to be an allowance for that. It is a big motion, it's a big movement across the country. There are ways to make it like semi-permanent where you, zoning-wise, if you have a tiny home on a piece of property, you require, let's say, a porch be attached to it so it's not quite so mobile. I mean, different neighborhoods have taken different tacks on this. But the tiny home movement is a good way to create the ADU functionality that is in fact portable. One of my problems with the whole thing is the owner occupancy is a great idea, but if I've taken and rented an ADU and I've spent a lot of care and, and effort in maintaining yard and helping the people and whatnot, and they pass away, I'm out of a home immediately.
About 20 seconds.
And if it's a tiny house, I can move it. So, I want to make sure, please consider that. I think it's very important.
Do we have any other speakers? Looks like we have one more up, up top.
My name is Reese Fowler, and I live at 26th and Donovan in Happy Valley. A lot of the similar comments we have tonight, but I'm giving a particular circumstance of where I live. I'm at Bellam Cohousing, which is a, you know, kind of a test case I'm at Bellingham Cohousing, which is a, you know, kind of a test case that happened back in the late 90s, or like 2000. And it's been a phenomenal success. You know, a great place to raise kids. And right now, we're, we're going through a lot of kind of growing pains because we're getting to that point where the founding members have, you know, their, their kids have grown up, they're out of the household, you know, a similar story to what we've heard here tonight, is that, you know, folks are wanting to downsize, but they want to continue to live at Bellingham Cohousing. The original density for the, the land that we have is 33 units. So we have 33 units in 10 residential buildings, and they're two-bedroom, up to four-bedroom. But what we have is folks that would like to downgrade into like a single bedroom or a studio. So adding potential units to Bellingham Cohousing would be really advantageous because it allows families who, you know, we have like, you know, small 780-square-foot places with, you know, two or three kids living with their parents. And they're in the small units because they can't get into the larger units, right? And then the larger units that have one, two people in them, there's nothing small enough for them to go down into. So adding possibly some ADUs that allow us to have more flexibility would be very advantageous. And I think that this, you know, is a great example because we have a microcosm of what the larger community is really feeling, right? With only 72 people on site, you can really look and see how it can work on a, you know, a more tangible scale rather than a whole neighborhood scale. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, we're working on the same type of things at Bellingham Cohousing, and we're, we're looking very closely at what develops with the attached ADUs, non-attached ADUs, ordinance, and how we can implement that to make life better at Bellingham Cohousing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to comment tonight? Keeping in mind that there'll be additional opportunities to participate. All right. I think with that, I will close the public comment portion of this work session, and I just want to thank everybody who spoke. I know a lot of people left, but hopefully that word will trickle back to them. We appreciate all public comment and written comment as well, so we're going to continue to take it. And I encourage people to continue to participate in the discussion. It's a community-wide discussion. And so with that, I think we will, we'll close the work session component of this meeting. And if everyone could just hang tight for one second, we, we just probably have like a minute of housekeeping so that it's not disrupted by everybody leaving, and then we'll get everybody out of here. I know it's really late, and I also really appreciate everyone staying so late. I'm going to talk to staff and the planning commissioners a little bit about the structure and, and see if we can set this up next time, so maybe we can take some comment at the beginning, because I feel, I feel bad that certain people left, and we were kind of trying to figure out how to handle this, but it may be better to take a, a period of comment at the beginning. I think we did that with the, with the, the waterfront, where we, there was so much comment, we took some at the beginning of the meeting for like a time commitment. And so if you got here early and signed up, you got to speak at the beginning, and then if you didn't, you got to speak at the end. And maybe that'll help, because we want to give everybody that opportunity. So I guess with that, I just want to check my notes. Do we have anything? Our next meeting's September 21st? Is that right? And that's, it looks like that's on a follow-up meeting on the short-term rental?
Correct.
And, and is that going to be the only focus of that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else that, that you want to deliver information to us on right now?
The second meeting in October probably will be about ADUs, so we'll be back, we'll be back in a month.
Okay. And for anybody who didn't hear that, that would be the second meeting in October, so about a month from now, we'd have a, a follow-up meeting on this topic. It'll be another work session. See, planning commissioners have comments? Yeah, Lisa?
Is there anything lined up for the first meeting?